Good evening. I will call to meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. This time, I will call on Councilman Travis Scott to lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time to come as a community, Lord, and to make decisions on behalf of this neighborhood that we're so proud of. Father, we pray that you'll bless this meeting and help us make decisions that prepare a way for those that really matter, Father, our citizens and those that are in need. Father, with special prayer, lift up our employees and those that serve this community in every way that they do. We also ask, Father, that you help us remember the true meaning of the season we're coming upon, which is Easter, and just help be with those that may not be able to attend the service as you would wish. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, you have the agenda. There are few known changes to the agenda that should be in a packet at your chair. The ones that I have are additions to the consent agenda, if approved, so approved, you gentlemen. It's item number 12, consideration and request for approval to promote firefighter one to the rank of firefighter two. Item number 13, consideration and request for approval to award a bid in the amount of $6,684.48 to Heat Transfer Solutions for HVAC services and authorize the town manager to execute the contract. And then item number 14, consideration and request for approval to award a bid in the amount of $3,600 to Clegg's Pest Control for pest control services and authorize the town manager to execute the contract. Those are the known changes to the consent agenda. And then there is one addition to the business items. Excuse me. It's item number three, special event, Third Street Farmer's Market. The business owners of Oak City Collections and Twisted Willow are requesting to hold a farmer's market the second and fourth Saturdays from now until October 14th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The request includes amplified sound and the closure of 100 block of South Third Street.
Yeah, and then on the consent agenda, there is one change. Item number six, special event, Father's Day Cookout. The applicant has just requested the time be changed to end at 9:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. And that is item number six on the consent agenda, special event, Father's Day Cookout. Just changing the end time to 9:00. Nothing else changes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda, add in consent items 12 through 14 with the change to item number six and also addition of business item number three as amended.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And now we'll move on to our first item this evening, presentation administering the oath of office to new police officer Lance Wheeler. If you will, please come forward, chief and anyone else who wish to come forward.
Good.
Just fine? How are you doing? How do you want to, sir? Is this good? All right. If you will, please repeat after me. I, Lance Wheeler.
I, Lance Wheeler.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And vigilant.
And vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws.
To enforce the criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Be safe. Thank you. So the next presentation this evening is a proclamation designating April the 18th, 2023, as Electrical Lineman Appreciation Day in the town of Smithfield. How are you, gentlemen, doing? You've heard me say it many times. These gentlemen in blue and the people that ride around in the big red fire trucks, they are heroes, but you also are heroes, the linemen that keep our electricity on in times of need. In fact, I'm not on town in Smithfield, but my power went out at 3:00 this morning. Came back on at about 6:20 for about 20 seconds and went back out. So right when we were trying to get ready for work and my daughter trying to get to Raleigh, she's paging this week in Raleigh and was trying to figure out how she was going to get ready in the dark. So I can attest to how important it is, and I want to just thank you before I read this proclamation. Ted, to you and your entire crew, thank you so much for all that you do for the citizens of the town of Smithfield. So this is a proclamation recognizing April 18th, 2023, as Electrical Lineman Appreciation Day in the town of Smithfield. Whereas the town of Smithfield honors the profession of linemen, as this profession is a selfless service steeped in personal, family, and professional tradition. And whereas electrical linemen are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to repair broken lines to make the scene safe for the citizens of the town of Smithfield, as well as other public safety workers. And whereas electrical linemen work on the town of Smithfield power lines 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep the electricity flowing. And whereas, due to the danger of their work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines, these linemen put their lives at risk every day for the citizens of the town of Smithfield, with little recognition for the community regarding the danger of their work. And whereas, the United States Senate in April of 2013 first recognized the efforts of electrical linemen in keeping the power on and protecting public safety, and has designated by resolution the annual celebration of a National Lineman Appreciation Day. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, mayor of the town of Smithfield, along with the members of the town council, do hereby proclaim April the 18th, 2023, as Electrical Lineman Appreciation Day. And we call upon the citizens of the town of Smithfield to recognize and appreciate the hard work, innovation, and dedication that these public servants make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you very much for all that you do. So the next proclamation is recognizing May 13th, 2023, as Next Generation Entrepreneur Day in the town of Smithfield, North Carolina. Kaylee, Ms. Smithfield, would you like to come forward? All right. You can just stand here and I'll read here. Whereas the United States entrepreneurs make up only 16% of the adult workforce, with less than 19% being minority and women owned, the town of Smithfield has approximately 13,000 residents, of which 23% are youth under the age of 18. And whereas the mayor's office offers to support the youth programs for Smithfield residents in the manner that is consistent with the youth council's and Chamber of Commerce's vision for growing and enhancing life skills for entrepreneur businesses for our towns, for our town youth. And whereas, the town of Smithfield is one of the fastest-growing towns in the state of North Carolina, the town of Smithfield is committed to supporting its youth to become leaders of change in their homes, schools, neighborhoods, and community by way of inspiring and encouraging small business entrepreneurship through engagement in relevant hands-on sustainable learning models. And whereas, in 2023, the town of Smithfield Chamber of Commerce and local businesses will provide an opportunity for young people to volunteer and participate in local government and business fairs to learn skills of leadership and responsibility. And whereas, the mayor's office and the town of Smithfield support Next Generation's Entrepreneur Day on May 13th, 2023. And whereas, the town of Smithfield recognizes that its youth of today are tomorrow's future and wants to encourage and invest in opportunities for its residents to grow and thrive within the town of Smithfield, as well as Johnston County. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, mayor of the town of Smithfield, do hereby proclaim May 13th, 2023, as Next Generation Entrepreneur Day in Smithfield, North Carolina. I urge all citizens to take time to inspire, encourage, mentor, and support our youth as they engage in the joy of servant leadership, creating diverse student-led businesses for profit and social impact. So thank you very much. It is my honor to present this to you. I want to put you on the spot, but is there anything you want to say? You don't have to.
I would love to say.
Okay, sure.
Thank you so much.
And while you're doing that, I think she would like to get a picture with the entire council.
If that's possible.
Do you mind coming down, everyone coming down here in front so we can get a picture while you're... Go ahead.
Okay. So the reason why I chose May 13th is because I'm having a business fair at the Smithfield Recreation Center. So so far during my reign, I wrote a children's book. I'm writing a book to write and encourage entrepreneurship in schools and really teach and grow our students and invest in them. So I'm really excited and thank you guys so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And we have several business owners out in the audience. I see them. So to them, thank you very much for all that you do, your small business owners. We truly appreciate it. And Kaylee, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to our public hearings. Okay, our first public hearing, this is not a quasi judicial hearing, so no need for anyone to be sworn in. The first public hearing is to permanently close the East-West Alley located at mid-block between East Massey Street and East Johnston Street, bound on the west by South Sixth Street, and the east by South Seventh Street, and adoption of resolution number 722. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion of public hearing?
Second. Motion and second. All in favor? Any opposed? Steven?
Thank you. So this request is by Olivia Holding, Twin States Farming. This is the alley being discussed between Johnson and Massey in between Sixth and Seventh Street. It's also the site of the future Spring Branch Phase II development, if you recall. There are a number of exhibits in your packet that Bob had prepared that references these exhibits. So this is just pointing out, this is exhibit one. Yellow is the Atkinson property and the orange is Michael Johnson property. Again, exhibit two. And then this is a survey of the same area with the alley in between the two colored stripes there. And the Spring Branch development is all the land to the left of the striped on this So the alley is adjacent to several parcels of land owned by Twin States Farming. The alley is within the block between Massey, East Johnson, Sixth Street, and Seventh Street. The alley's border on properties owned by AVS Investments, LLC, and Loretta N. Wall and Mr. Atkins. The purpose of the right-of-way closure is to facilitate the development of the adjacent vacant properties, as I mentioned. Once permanently closed, the alley will be divided down the center line. Each half will revert back to the landowners adjacent. So we had a resolution, 721, adopted by the council last month, setting the date for the public hearing as tonight. So we're here for that purpose. We advertised, as required by statute, and tonight's the public hearing, so anyone can speak on the matter. Staff is recommending adoption of resolution... Sorry, that was supposed to be fixed. Staff is recommending permanent closing of the alley. And Bob Spence is here to take any questions on the matter. And I'll go back to the survey.
Any questions for Steven or for Bob at this time?
Mayor, I do have one question, and it's probably real simple. With closing of the alleyway, most of the time, the right-of-way, there's utility easement. Does that affect this? Is there any utilities there? And would that easement still remain?
I don't believe there are any easements, or sorry, any utilities in the easement. This is an alley, this is the alley, from what we can tell, has never actually been used as an alley.
Okay. So I mean, we won't need it for utility purposes, I guess. Okay.
That's a very good question, but we don't think there's any utilities in there. Or I've been there because this, a lot of these alleys, this is a, these alleys were developed in 1920, thereabout, by Platt, so it's over 100 years old. And it was never really opened up. But you know, you've got that in South Smithfield, you've got people who have garbage cans all alleys, and then you drive to the middle of the block and pick up the garbage cans. There were blocks in which these alleys that would go through the middle of the block were considered a convenience for utilities and garbage pickup and that kind of thing. So people liked them.
Well, the redevelopment is very honorable. I just want to make sure we could meet their needs if we needed utility for whatever purpose. But that's all that question I had.
Right now, it's more of a cloud on the title for everybody. It's not necessary. Nobody's using it. Nobody wants to use it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If you will, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
John Keely, reside at 1208 Chestnut Drive, South Smithfield. My only question is, when you return those easements, or if it is a dedicated easement, does it go back to the homeowner? As he asked a question about will the right to have utilities or anything else right-of-way for any development?
We closed one in South Smithfield. When we closed in South Smithfield, there were utilities there. So when we closed that one, we reserved the utilities because we needed the utilities run along the branch. So that was closed between Vermont and First Street. Now, there are no utilities there, but the law basically says that usually the alley is between two property owners. So the alley reverts 50% on one side to one property owner, 50% on the other. Now, there's nothing wrong with the property owners owning both sides. Basically, what we're trying to do is allow people to build a house on that alley, maybe five, you know, a series of houses, and not worry about whether somebody's going to later come up and say, move the house because that's on my alley. This alley is...
But the property reverts to the owners and then it fits with the building line of their lot.
That's right.
Allow the building lot. All right, that's my own question.
Any other questions from anyone in your audience? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. It's the pleasure of the council.
It is resolution number 722, right? I move that we approve resolution 722, street closing order.
I have a motion to approve the resolution number 722, which permanently closing the East-West Alleyway. A motion, do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we'll move on to our next public hearing. This also is not a quasi judicial hearing, so no need for anyone to be sworn in. It is ZA-23-02, town of Smithfield. The applicant is requesting an amendment to Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7, Section 7.3, accessory uses for structures to allow two accessory structures per residential lot. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, Mayor.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Steven?
Thank you. So as the mayor stated, this is a request to amend the ordinance, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7, Section 7.3, to allow two accessory structures per residential lot. In 2001, the town council had approved the allowing of two accessory structures on lots greater than a half acre in the R-28 district. That primarily was to accommodate agricultural-type uses, having greater needs for storage. Last meeting, the council had requested staff to prepare an amendment to allow two accessory structures per lot for all residential lots. And so that's what we've done tonight. This went before the planning board, and they recommended approval. Smithfield lacks, Smithfield properties often lack a garage, leaving them with limited storage space. The existing exemption for pool houses not exceeding 150 square feet and granny pods not exceeding 300 square feet will remain. Accessory dwelling units in the R-28 zoning district will be considered one of the two allowed accessory structures if it is freestanding and not included within another existing Just to point out, there are some instances where there are impervious surface limitations because of stormwater that will dictate whether or not there would be the ability to put a secondary structure on the lot. Accessory structures require a zoning permit from the town of Smithfield, and if they're over 200 square feet, they require a building permit from Johnston County. So that remains the same. So the actual ordinance is pretty simple. It'll permit two accessory structures per residential lot. It's going to delete the text that was creating the allowance for a secondary structure for just the R-28 district, so that'll be stricken. The other thing this ordinance does is affixes a really kind of a formatting issue that was created when they created the fence ordinance, kind of got stuck between parts of the accessory dwelling ordinance. So it just reorders it. So that'll be fixed. And so staff is recommending approval based on a consistency statement. This is staff's opinion. And staff and the planning board are recommending approval of the zoning amendment.
Any questions for the planning director at this time?
Steven, I just want a little clarification on this. It says exemption for pool houses and granny pods. So does that mean that they do not count in your two?
Right. You can have them.
So you can have a pool house, a granny pod, and two storage buildings?
That's right.
Storage buildings, excuse me.
Steven, one of the issues that we had when we were looking at this was, the fact is that there's so much noncompliance right now across the town where people has already done it, that to continue to require it puts the people who do the right thing at a disadvantage for all the many people that didn't do the right thing. So this kind of makes it fair to everybody, does everybody can have two. Isn't that really what we had this discussion?
Yes.
So it kind of corrects, it makes it more fair to everybody in town, so.
And you'd be surprised at how many people have come in in the last two weeks asking for accessory structures that already had one, so we've been saying, you know, wait two weeks. So I think you'll see a lot of people very happy with this.
I also know that those external storage facilities that are full everywhere around, I know for a fact that it costs a lot of money every month to do that. So if you put something on your own yard to store your stuff, it would be much more beneficial to people.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I have one question. Mr. Winsman, I understand the concept. If somebody was to have a small, permanent, like greenhouse structure, a modern one, does that fall in that same category?
Is a freestanding structure?
A greenhouse, like a greenhouse with the plastic and the sides? Yes.
I believe that would be an accessory structure.
Okay.
Probably depends on what it's made out of and how it's constructed, but...
My other question would be, does the setback still stand the same as they're published?
Accessory structures have a 10-foot setback from the side and rear property lines.
What about from the main structure? That was a...
There may be a fire code issue, but I think my recollection is like six feet, unless there's a firewall. The fire chief could probably confirm that.
It's residential, we couldn't have...
Okay.
I remember that being an issue before, but that's not for now, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Not seeing anyone. Not seeing anyone. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move a closed public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to approve zoning text amendments, ZA-23-02, amending Article 7, Section 7.3, accessory uses in structure to allow two accessory structure per residential lot, finding the amendment consistent with the Town of Smithfield Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest.
Okay. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
And a second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Well, we'll move to our next public hearing, which is CA-23-03. Again, the Town of Smithfield. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the Smithfield Town Plan that adopts a new volume titled Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move open the public hearing.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. This is an overview. The town plan was adopted in 2020. That was a comprehensive land use plan and transportation plan. And that plan recommended the pursuing of a NC DOT-sponsored pedestrian plan through their, their planning grant program, which we have done. The town council adopted a resolution of support for this grant in 2019. And then, how that works is the DOT then assigns a contractor consultant to the town to implement the pedestrian plan. So we were assigned ACOM to prepare our plan. The draft plan is a culmination of a planning process to improve pedestrian safety, connectivity, health, and well-being throughout the recommended infrastructure projects and community policies and programs. With the adoption of the plan, the town will be well-positioned to pursue funding opportunities, particularly through the NC DOT. Without this plan, we would be really hampered from pursuing some of those. So it'll further our goals towards more multimodal-type improvements. So this is the main plan. It's a little bit hard to see at this scale. It's even hard to see on a very large sheet of paper because it's a bunch of lines and dots, really. But basically, what this represents is, on most of the corridors, we're recommending a sidewalk on one side of the street and a multi-purpose trail on the other side, so that we're looking at like Brightleaf Boulevard, Market Street, Wilson's Mills, those kind of streets, you know, most of the collector roads that cross through the town. So wherever a new facility is required to be put in, you'd refer back to this pedestrian plan to decide whether it would be a sidewalk or a trail. And then if DOT were to do a project on that street, this would require NC DOT to actually put in those facilities at their own cost, not the town's cost. The dots on the plan represent spot projects, and they're really safety, safety recommendations. Is there a question? I can...
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Not yet.
Just wanted to make sure. Really, safety, safety recommendations, and they're mostly at intersections. For instance, one of them recommends a supplementary study where, you know, we're talking about a CMAC-funded trail in West Smithfield. At some point, from that trail, you need to get over to NC 210, and that is a very complex intersection, a Y-intersection, not great for pedestrian crossing. So there would probably need to be some other kind of pedestrian improvements to make such a crossing safely, and this plan didn't get into it, but what it is, it's recommending kind of a special study of that area if that opportunity arises. This is just, again, a more detailed of the main part of the town, but this plan does cover the ETJ and the corporate limits of the town. So the plan prioritizes recommended projects based on the public input gathered throughout the process. It identifies key projects with costs, policies and programs, including ordinance recommendations, safety program recommendations, in lieu of sidewalk fee ordinance recommendation in particular. A key implementation, key implementation steps include adoption of the plan, creation of an active transportation advisory committee. It identifies potential funding sources and performance and evaluation measures. I want to point out that, you know, staff reviewed the recommendations by ACOM, but DOT took them about two months to get through it, and they made sure what they wanted was in the plan. It was funded by them. They made sure it had all the features they were looking for. So it's probably somewhat formulaic in terms of what DOT is looking for, just in case there are any questions about the format of it and what's the content of it. But we tried to make sure that it was tailored to, at least what planning thought were our issues throughout the process. So with that, planning staff and the planning board is recommending adoption of the pedestrian plan, and this would be basically an addendum of the comprehensive plan. So it'd have the same weight as the comprehensive plan. Any questions?
Any questions for Stephen?
I got a few. So bring, if you would, bring back up that, this map right here, the one you got here.
Do you want the detail of it, or the...
This one right here, the one that's got the blue on the side. Because I, that's the one. So if you, if you look at this map, you can see clearly where District 4, West Smithfield sits, away from everything else. I mean, it sits away, because it wasn't a part of town until 1994. Understand, but it is a part of town. How do we get those people to the amenities on this side of town? It's one of the things I've been harping on from the very beginning. How do we get them there? I looked at the stuff. I see that we have now finally got, as they said we could never do, now we have marked down that there's a potential for sidewalks on Wilson Mills Road that can help us. I know that. We have a potential grant in to get us up to Wilson Mills Road. Hopefully, that'll help us. But the thing about this plan that concerns me is, I went through and read this plan as best I could, because it's, I mean, it's a monster, right? But I read this plan, and it showed that out of the 31 key community features, only one of them is accessible pedestrian-wise to that district. Only one, out of 30. Only one. That says pedestrian pathway. This is not working for West Smithfield. The pedestrian plan doesn't work for Smithfield, West Smithfield. That's what it tells me. Now, there's potential for plan, and I'm gonna tell you the truth, I'm gonna vote for it, because I know we need it to have, for plans for the future so that we can get grants and so on. I know we need it, but I want to make sure that I was publicly on the record. I'm not happy that, again, District 4, West Smithfield, pedestrian-wise, is still not included. There should have been something in here directly related to how we're going to fix this problem. How are we getting our kids from West Smithfield to these amenities? How do we get them to the library? How do we get them to the community park? How do we get to all the great things we've been developing on the other side of the river? Because you sure can't walk down Durwood-Stevenson Parkway, not unless you want to put your life on your hands. You can't walk down 70 unless you want to put your life on your hands, and you can't walk down Wilson Mills Road unless you want to put your life on your hands. So how do we get them there? They can't ride the bicycle. They can't do that. So at this point in time, my point being is, at this point in time, it really doesn't give me a good, warm, and fuzzy on how we're going to get pedestrian any time in my lifetime to help us get those people to West Smithfield. Okay? That's my spiel there. Go ahead.
Are you referring to the priorities?
Yeah, I saw the priorities, too. We were 23 out of 53 for a side.
I mean, the priorities came from the limited public input we received. Obviously, we did some online surveys and some face-to-face, and, you know, whoever shows up votes. The, all the corridors in West Smithfield have the sidewalk and trail requirements and recommendations, including Durwood-Stevenson Parkway. But you and I know, Durwood-Stevenson Parkway, that implementation would be very costly, and it's probably going to be quite some time to come to fruition. And as you know, we have a CMAC grant to facilitate a trail construction from the river to Wilson's Mills Road, which is a start of connecting West Smithfield to the rest of the town. But yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And let me say, I was involved in some of the discussions, and I personally was not impressed by the, I mean, they didn't really have anything to say to us. We were waiting to talk to them about the stuff, and they weren't interested in what we were doing. So I'm saying, I'm not surprised that we're not included in this. They had a task to do, and they ticked off their task. Okay? There's some good things in here, and I'm not going to, again, I said, I'm gonna vote in favor. I'm gonna let you know now, I'm telling you in advance, I am, because we need it. We need it badly, but I'm just not happy the fact that they, again, have left off of District 4. That's who I'm here to represent. You expect me to do that, right? That's why I'm voted to be here, to represent West Smithfield. And I'm saying, there's more that could have been done in this pedestrian plan to get my kids to access the rest of the town. And I don't see any time in the near future with this plan, it's gonna work. I mean, we're way down the list on priorities. Money is, becomes a factor. It's not gonna happen anytime soon. So, you know, I just, I want to make sure I voice that opinion out there so that people would know that, you know, that we still need to find a way to connect West Smithfield to the rest of the town. You know, I gotta live with our utilities bill being higher now than the rest of the town, but I'd like to be able to get my kids to the town to be able to do the things, top all the things, great things the library does and other things, and they can't safely get here. So that's a concern for me.
I mean, there's nothing saying the council can't make recommendations that are different than what are in this plan, like changing the priorities to some degree. You guys, as a body, can also choose to fund things or pursue funding for things that are lower on the list than those on the top of the list. These are recommendations. So if there are specific things that you want to discuss, we'd be happy to.
Any other questions or comments for Stephen?
Stephen, a lot of the development that goes on in town, we're already requiring those people to put in sidewalks anyway.
Right.
Correct. But that is in town limits. So this would actually expand it out into the ETJ?
No, actually, we require it throughout our, throughout our planning jurisdiction, whether it's ETJ or town. What this'll do is it'll help us decide whether it should be a sidewalk or a trail, because sometimes we don't really know what, you know, we want development to development to have a consistent, whether it's a sidewalk or trail, on this side of the street or that side of the street. Gets kind of chaotic when one developer says, I want to put in a trail, and the other one says, I want to put in a sidewalk. The ordinance is sidewalk, but we've allowed trails through conditional zoning in some cases because we felt it made sense. Now, this will create more of a coordinated plan, so we know where the trail's going to, what side of the street it should go to, and just kind of help guide that.
Okay.
And also help us, DOT is gonna build trails if they have a project, and if the town chooses to do a project, you know, we'll fill in the pieces between what developers put in and others may put in.
Okay. So DOT wanted to do extensive repair on 301 South, and this was part of the plan. When they did that, they would put the sidewalks in as part of their cost?
Well, I wouldn't say about a repair, but like they're gonna completely redo the bridge over the river. They will, you know, build to accommodate whatever facilities we have on this plan, whether it's a sidewalk or trail, and make sure that it's accounted for. If they completely do, you know, a street widening project down South Brightleaf Boulevard, yes, then they would be required to put in those facilities.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Not seeing any. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mayor.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, for the planning board and the staff, adopt the pedestrian plan as amended, part of the town plan.
Motion from Councilman Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Carries. Thank you. This time, we'll move to citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak, if you will, please come forward. Say your name and address for the record. I'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone. This time, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move to our business items. That's, our first one is page 119, I believe, our agenda. First is the presentation on the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan.
Mayor, council, tonight, we have Jen Beetle-Munley from McAdams Company. Last year, in last year's fiscal year's budget, you budgeted us money to complete a comprehensive master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. We did a request for qualifications. We interviewed several companies and selected McAdams. They have spent about 10 months collecting data and input from the public and other information, and they have come with us for their, with their recommendations for moving forward. This document is a 10-year guide for our department, is a fluid document, and it's a very big asset for grant purposes as well, so.
Thanks, Gary. Good evening, council. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to tell you about this plan that we've created for Parks and Recreation in Smithfield for the next 10 years. How this presentation will flow and what to expect, we're kind of just gonna go through the who, what, when, where, why process. We'll talk about why we did this plan, why y'all were wise to fund it last year. We'll talk about what we did, how we did it, who we did it with, what we found, and where we go from here. And then, of course, there'll be time for questions and feedback. So why we did this plan? There are several reasons for investing in a Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. You can see the list of a few here on the screen. The plan will help us prioritize goals and objectives for the department for the next 10 years. It allows us to, like Gary said, when we're out, gathering data, information, looking at the parks, understanding Parks and Recreation programs and all the great facilities that you all have here, identifying where there might be opportunity to fill in some service gaps. The plan becomes a catalog of community wants and needs, and we figure that out by talking to stakeholders, to Parks and Recreation staff, and to the general public. Interestingly and helpfully, the plan becomes essentially a work plan for staff, the Parks and Recreation staff, for the next 10 years. It helps kind of shape outcomes and allows them to kind of look at their position and what the information in the plan and what the recommendations are. what the information in the plan and what the recommendations are, and using that to make decisions about what they budget for and what they do in their job. The plan allows us to be visible in the community, engaging stakeholders and the community at large. We set up shop at the Ham and Yam Festival last year, and we had probably close to 150, if not more, people stop by and talk to us and tell us what they like to see. And we'll talk about that later. It also allows Gary and his staff and other town of Smithfield staff to say, "Hey, look, we've gathered all this information. We can point to certain scenarios and certain facts when approaching y'all to kind of say, 'Hey, look, this is what we found. Can you please help support us in X, Y, Z way?'" We also look at population growth. Smithfield is slated to grow and change pretty substantially over the next 10 years. So we wanna understand what the population looks like now, what to expect in 10 years, and how we can be proactive in accommodating that. And lastly, like Gary said, having this plan, especially for a town like Smithfield, makes you guys quite competitive for grant funding. There are some big ones out there, and there seems to be a lot of support in our General Assembly for funding Parks and Recreation at the local level. All right, so talk about what we did. We just talked about why we did it, and so here is a snapshot of what we did. Do you guys know who that is in the picture? 'Cause I want to know him.
Put on a little weight in that picture.
Stand up.
Well, it's great to meet you. Sorry to get everyone off track. Okay, so this is what we did. So what we did was, we did an assessment of all of the parks and facilities in Smithfield. We looked at, like I had just said, an analysis of how the town's demographics is slated to change, stay the same, et cetera, and looking at how trends in parks and recreation are likely to change, stay the same, what's going on with pickleball, oh my god. Level of service, what do, what is Smithfield providing in context of what a typical department that serves communities like Smithfield, what does that look like in comparison, to a degree? We also looked at equity, equity and accessibility. Can, like gentleman, Councilman Barber was talking about earlier, how do we get people from point A to point B? How accessible are those parks? Are they nearby? Do people have to drive for a while to get there? Understanding all of that stuff is how we consider what is equitable in a place. We also looked at what to expect as the town grows, some scenarios for developer fees. Of course, community engagement was a huge part of this plan. And we also took a look at all of the programs that Smithfield Parks and Recreation offers to the community to get an understanding of what people's favorite things are, what might not be so popular anymore, to kind of give them some idea of how to move forward. Okay, so how we did this? Pretty straightforward. We did our research, like I said, understanding trends, demographics. We engaged the community, arrived at findings, understood what the town's values are, what the Parks and Recreation Department's values are. Used all of that to come up with a set of recommendations and a realistic action plan to follow to implement recommendations, and we are here tonight with the final plan to present. All right, so who we did this plan with? Who were all the major players? Well, we can talk about community engagement. We did a statistically valid scientific survey, where a survey was mailed out to a random sample of Smithfield residents, and we had 328 responses, which is scientifically accurate at a 95% level of confidence. Meaning that if the survey were to be replicated today or tomorrow, that the results have a 95% likelihood of being the same. We engaged with some stakeholder groups, folks that represented certain segments of the community, certain interests in the community, and then also some friend and partner organizations like downtown Smithfield and the school system. We had listening sessions with staff, with Smithfield Parks and Recreation staff, so that they could tell us about what's working, what's good, what kind of feedback they're getting from park visitors and program participants. And like I said, we had upward of 100 people stop by our community engagement booth at Ham and Yam. Okay, so a few findings from our scientific survey. I listed the top three of what they call a priority index score. And so what that does is the survey looked at what people consider important for recreation in the town, and what they feel like their needs are not being met, and they kind of crisscross those together, and they come up with what's called a priority index rating. So with that, the top three recommendations, or the top three findings for amenities, people wanted to see a farmer's market, fishing access, and some type of environmental center. High-ranking programs were outdoor movies and concerts, special events and festivals, art programs, fitness and wellness, senior programs and trips, and adult athletics. And the way folks expressed their desire for how the department and how the town should prioritize implementing those things was through creating connections and sense of place, being affordable, and promoting health and wellness. And on this list, a lot of what is on this list, the department already does provide and provides in a high level of quality. Okay, so this public input came from the Ham and Yam Festival. I know it's a little bit hard to see, but I think overall, it's important to recognize that the environment and nature was a very strongly held community value. All right, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. Please interrupt at any time.
The prior slide, it said environmental center.
Environmental center.
What's, what's your definition of that?
Well, I wish I could tell you that there was a very strict definition, but it's, it is an item on a survey where there is room for interpretation.
What are some examples you might know of that?
Yeah, sure. So have you been to the Wetland Center in Raleigh, in, over in East Raleigh? Well, it's kind of, it's an indoor facility and with an outdoor component with trails and things like that. That's an example of one. Howell Woods, yep, yep. So a lot of times with this, there are resources nearby. It's not saying, you know, this is not saying, and we wouldn't recommend that the town go out and find property and build an environmental center. A lot of times, it's just making people aware of what's already here. So, a recommendation you'll see in a few slides would be to cross-market with maybe Howell Woods or the Community College and other departments, other neighboring departments and service providers. So just because these things rise to the top as desired amenities, doesn't mean that they have to be created from scratch. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Okay, just a quick snapshot of what we found. In terms of demographics, I know that the town just did a townwide comprehensive plan, so some of this may sound familiar. The population is expected to grow, and grow at a higher level than the population of North Carolina is growing, and the population of the United States is growing. So you can see in these charts, the percentage of age groups that are in Smithfield, and this is based on the 2020 census data, that some segments of the population are expected to grow, while others stay the same, and some kind of... And also, interestingly, the people's level of financial stability is becoming elevated with folks that are making more money. That amount of people is growing, and the amount of people making less money is shrinking. So we're kind of going like this, and everyone's doing a little bit better, is what we found. All right, so in terms of what we looked at for Smithfield's Parks and Recreation system, we looked at the parks and facilities, inventoried programs, and got an understanding of how that stands, and looking at the services the department provides. I know this is a little bit hard to see, but just to give you an understanding of how we evaluated the park system, we looked at it from the perspective of themes and like recurring observances, or observations that we came across during our site visit and our time that we spent here. So I won't read all of these bullets, but themes that we looked at were general conditions. What do the parks look like? Are they clean or are they well-maintained? Are they functioning the way that they, that they were designed to function? What are the level of amenities in the parks? Are there plenty of different things for people with different interests? How are the parks functioning? What do the furnishings look like? And how do people get around? Is there adequate signage? So what we found was that there was a park assess, or park assessment done in 2017, and the department, more or less, addressed any concerns that was, that was recommended in that plan. So that was paved parking, contemporary playground equipment, some site upgrades, some landscaping upgrades, so that, that was, it was great that that had been accomplished. We found that the staff did a really well, or did a really good job of maintaining the park aesthetics and cleanliness and safety despite being on the shorter end of resource in terms of maintenance. Diversity of amenities, the town of Smithfield has a very diverse inventory of amenities, especially for a town this size. We also found that the department and the town has made really good use of developing resources, recreation resource opportunities around the Neuse River. The department's further diversified their amenities by creating a dog park and putting it as a slashback. We did find that there was an opportunity to activate some of the smaller downtown parks with different amenities, and you can kind of figure that out, what you wanna put there by engaging with the communities that are kind of living within the gen, or within like the direct vicinity of those parks. And Buffalo Creek Greenway is a first-rate amenity that connects many of the town's parks. In terms of park functions and furnishings, we found that there is an opportunity to communicate the town's brand through the use of consistent furnishings, and that, and by furnishings, I mean benches, trash cans, things like that, which also is a financially responsible thing to do, because you know exactly what they're made out of, how to fix them, and when to replace them. We also found that there's an opportunity to, to comfort facilities, clean and stuff at all times, with investment and more staff resources. In terms of signage, the park signage will give park visitors a cue that they are in a, that they're in a town of Smithfield Park with a big blue sign. We said that there is an opportunity to, to put more of those blue signs kind of throughout the park, kind of pop up, like you are here at some of the bigger parks, like Community Park. An example could be maybe at the front side of the park, over by Miracle League Field, maybe a sign saying "This Way" to tennis courts, and things like that. The way, what? Okay. Oh, you did it recently? Okay, so a lot of these things, because this, this plan had been going on over the course of some months, Gary and the department have actually already implemented a good amount of these recommendations. So I can't wait to go out and see the new signs. Am I not loud enough? Okay, sorry. All right, so for recreation programs, what we found is that the department offers a lot of various programs. The department kind of stands out among other departments, because they do have a lot of opportunities for young pre-K kids. The athletics programs are, are well-resourced and funded, and the town really appreciates that kind of culture of youth athletics in the department. And at one point during the process of the plan, we did an analysis, kind of looking at when programs have kind of reached the end of their youthful life and interest is kind of waning, so we came up with a strategy to address that and make sure that resources are being applied to programs that are, have a high level of interest and attendance. Okay, so we took a, an inventory of the park programs and kind of categorized them. So these are seven program categories that we found that the department offers. So those categories are youth and, youth sports and fitness, adult fitness and athletics. Holiday programs are awesome. The camps, there's a ton of camps that really keep kids active and engaged and healthy during the times when they're out of school. Of course, aquatics program at this, at the Shrack are top-notch. Having the pottery studio and all the space allows the department to put on a robust offerings for arts and crafts programs, and of course, the town's special events. Okay, so there's a bunch of numbers up here. I'm gonna try to make it simple and straightforward. So what this is, is a comparison of, sorry. This isn't on, I don't think. Okay. So we looked at, compared Smithfield to what in the typical Parks and Recreation Department nationally offers. So what we found was that Smithfield, in terms of parkland per 1,000 residents, Smithfield provides 9.97 acres, which is less than the median nationwide. Trail miles, Smithfield provides over six miles of trails, which is twice the national median. In terms of operating expenditures, the town, last year's budget spent overall close to $2 million total on leisure services, and that includes the department's two distinct separate budgets for the Shrack and for parks in the Sarah Yard Center. And that is greater than the national median, but less than the highest quartile. Spending per capita is $168 per person last year. And lastly, staffing per 10,000 residents, the national median is 11.3 staff people per 10,000 residents, and Smithfield is at 10.6, so that's slightly less than the national median. And of course, y'all are so fortunate to have the Shrack. The national median for square foot of indoor recreation space per person is two square feet, and Smithfield offers over six feet. Does anybody have questions about that? All right, last slide...
I'm sorry, before you move on, the per capita number, did you use that off the census data from 2020, you said?
Yes, that's for the population. Yep, that's how we figured out per capita. Okay, the last question of, or the last slide of what we found. Like I said earlier, when I introduced the project, a component of this project and analysis was equity and finding out and understanding how different folks from socially vulnerable parts of Smithfield, what type of access they have to parks. And you can see in this map that the darkest shade represents areas of town with the most socially vulnerable populations. And you can see that the majority of the town's parks are located within those socially vulnerable populations, but I will note that not on this map are the parks that are in the least vulnerable parts of town. And the town is investing in a park in West Smithfield, which at this time is experiencing a lack of easy access to a park. Okay, where we go from here with our recommendations? So general recommendations, we recommend that the department continue to do the good job... So general recommendations, we recommend that the department continue to do the good job that they do, positioning parks and recreation as an essential service, especially for a growing community. And ways of doing this would be to poll or survey existing and potential developers that are coming into town, seeing what makes them want to come to Smithfield, what parks and recreation services are here that are attracting them to here instead of other places. We recommend enhancing and expanding the park system to meet community needs and wants. And again, kind of going back to that conversation we had just a little while ago, this doesn't always mean building something from scratch. It could involve cross-marketing with downtown Smithfield, with the Visitors Bureau, with all of these different partner organizations that we have across town and across the county to bring awareness to the fact that these things already exist. So again, just to reiterate, what those top five were, what people wanted to see was a farmer's market, fishing access, an environmental education facility slash amenity, expanding the splash pad at Ava Ennis, which is underway now. And to activate some, activate space downtown for civic participation and multifunctional usage. So for parkland and amenities, we kind of took a broad approach to recommendations for the parks. Like I said, activating, activating some of the mini parks, the smaller downtown parks in community parks would be to implement a design framework so that you're understanding, like I said again, kind of when to, when to replace things, those types of preventative maintenance, what types of plantings, just consistency so that you can easily understand when things need upgraded and that people can move around and experience the parks in a high-functioning way. All right, recommendations for recreation programming. Like I said, we've got an assessment and analysis tool within the plan that will allow Gary and his staff to make informed decisions about when to cancel programs, when to start new programs, and using that as a guide. Basing decisions for introducing new programming based on community needs. So that's using consistent surveying, getting people to tell you what they want to see, what maybe, you know, just kind of that comment card approach. So constantly engaging your program participants to make sure that you're doing what they want to see. And because learning and connection to the environment and nature was such a high community value, we're recommending that the town expand education and learning through connections to the natural environment by park amenities and recreational programs. Okay, what we found and what we're recommending in terms of operations and maintenance, we are recommending that the department and the town build the capacity to meet growing community needs. And by that, we recommend hiring two new additional full-time maintenance technicians for that Gary and his crew does a really great job of retaining their dedicated part-time staff. So we recommend that that continue to be part of the department's culture. Continue to invest in professional development for the staff so that they can cross-train and that there can be a succession plan for when folks retire or leave the department. And continue to enhance marketing, marketing communication and brand identity. And that could be something in the medium term, hiring a full-time communication staff person. A lot of parks and recreation departments have somebody like that on their staff, and they're able to do those jobs like we were just talking about, cross-marketing, generating awareness, generating support for parks and recreation in a community. Okay, level of service. I know that the town is underway with a new park off 210. So we recommend that the town continue to seek out opportunities to acquire new and accommodate current land for park development. We are recommending investing in a park master plan for the 210 park, which the town has already approved. And investing in a, I know you all just did a pedestrian plan, but another component to enhance that would be to do a traditional greenways and trails plan as a component of a recreational trails component of an active transportation plan. And with that, I will take any questions, and I appreciate your time.
Any questions on the plan?
I'm sure I could ask a question. One of the things I find very interesting is the thing spoke about the environmental and the fishing. I don't know, I guess it's something we need to talk about, if that's what everybody wants.
So glad you mentioned that, because that's one thing I've been talking about. And we just did, you said fishing, right?
That's what's on here, yeah.
Yeah, so that's one thing that I've mentioned to the manager since I became, and to Gary since I became mayor. So we have a park now with walking trail around it, a pond. So I'm not, there must be some fish in it because I've seen some people there, and we may need to be, I want to digress a little bit, but we may need to look at parking or something because I'm really concerned, a few times that I've been by there, that there are people pulling up with their cars onto a brand-new paved walkway. Just saw it last week. They appeared to be fishing, which is great, which is exactly what I want. But we may want to start maybe looking at how we can do that. But I'm not sure if that pond or if that's even the place, right? But I was thinking that maybe we could talk to some folks and maybe stock that pond if that's something the council wanted to do.
We have made contact with the Wildlife Commission. They're going to come and look at ponds to see, they have community fishing ponds, and Johnston County does not have one at this point in time. So it would be of interest for them, in which they would stock the pond. And possibly even build a dock, you know, or a fishing pier.
What about the one in West Smithfield?
Which one?
The new pond, the one...
Oh, the new, yeah, I mean, mm-hmm. Yep, absolutely.
We're looking at the options up there. What's, we can get help with what we'll be able to...
Any other questions? Comments?
I don't mean to be critical, but if I'd done this plan, I can't imagine submitting it without a table of contents or index. Either one of them, it could take them more than two hours.
Don't mind him.
Just give him the dobe.
If you want us to use it, you would give us a table of contents.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may, sir.
Okay, because I've got the, I looked at the report. Looked at the real, the whole thing, looked at the whole thing. So I just want to understand when it comes to, I don't know if you have it up there or not, but on page 94 talks about staffing. And I'm trying to understand the chart. You know, I know what you said, and I understand. And we've had, I'm on the advisory board because I know, I know the thing. But I'm trying to look at the chart here to make sure I understand what it's showing on page 94. Do you have page 94 in the book?
I do.
Okay, my question is, so see if I understand this. Line across says the town of Smithfield currently has 12 full-time employees in its parks area. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then it says the town of Smithfield population requires 10.6 right now.
Per 10,000.
Per 10,000. But it says, okay, so then it says the low 6.4, and I see this is, this is how many you should have per 10,000.
Yes.
Correct.
And so we have, since we have right, how many, what about the population right now? It's like almost 12,000, isn't it right? Something like that?
Yes.
So therefore, the 12 fits in line with that, correct? I mean, I'm just trying to understand. Based on this chart, where we're at today is where we're supposed to be today based upon the number in this chart. Correct or incorrect? I'm just looking at the chart that you have.
We're the median, right?
Not the future growth, because future growth, obviously...
Yeah, we're about half of, a half a man down. Because 11.3 is the median, the national median.
Okay.
And we're at 10.6.
Per 10,000.
10.6 per 10,000, I see. Yeah, okay. So but the, and the low would be 6.4, so we're right in the middle. So we're pretty close as far as, as far as the staffing per resident here on this chart is concerned, we are currently, prior to any of the expansion we know is coming, and we know a lot of it's coming, that currently we're sitting pretty much where we're supposed to be, give or take. We have some part-time help and stuff like that, too. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what the, that is what the context of the chart.
Okay. But now I thought that we had some statements that were made that said that we needed to add, I thought, so I was going to say, Renad, immediately add two people. I thought that's what it said on the...
Well, that's what she mentioned, yes. Two people. Two additional people, I think was the recommendation.
Yes, and a basis for that was based on community feedback and observations throughout the parks and conversations with staff that led to Gary and I kind of working together to land on that. Two additional maintenance people would allow, again, those bathrooms to be cleaned, stocked, not vandalized, allowing, you know, allowing the staff to do, take a high level of quality and observation as far as making sure all of the little things are fixed. Because those are the things that people notice and that they will call Gary and some of his staff to raise concern about when there's cleanliness and vandalism issues. And his staff worked really, really hard. Like I said, when we came out here and looked at the parks, they're super well-maintained and clean and safe. Based on some of our observations and some feedback from the community, there was enough evidence to reasonably and responsibly recommend that the department hire maintenance staff.
And that was what's on this other, on the other page 95. So where the, based upon where everybody's spending their time.
Correct. Most, y'all are not unique in this, you know, challenge. 99.9% of parks and recreation departments would never tell you that they have all of the maintenance staff that they need and that their parks are in wonderful, 100% tip-top shape. I don't think that I've ever heard that in doing this work. However, there are instances where those gaps are bigger than others.
So can I ask the question? So now, this does not take into consideration the outside contracting people we use to do some parks and recreation work, does it?
It does not.
So if we contract somebody, like example, we have to contract people to cut the grass. Is that right? That would be, technically speaking, you would add, you should be adding that number to this as far as what we're doing today. We're paying us outside sales. So the point is, if we were to bring them into the thing to do it ourselves, that would add to the number of FTEs, correct? I mean, for the work.
So I think it would, I mean, if we brought them in-house. But to me, and I'll let you answer, but to me, to really answer that question, we would have to look at how other communities handle that. Other communities may not handle as far as Parks and Rec, cutting the grass. Public Works, I mean, you know, or Appearance Commission or something like that, another division of the town may actually be responsible for the grounds, not Parks and Recreation. Not in all cases, but I think that would be the case in some communities. Is that a fair statement? And we need to, we would probably need to look at that to see where that actually is.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, 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 I mean, they're great questions, but in there, ones I thought about, that's why I was, that's why I kind of thought about that, and I've been asking around. Some communities, their Parks and Rec, the actual maintenance, cutting the grass and everything, is not handled under Parks and Recreation. It's either contracted out or it's handled by another department within the town.
Yes, that's why, I guess I'm a data guy, so I kind of, I kind of, I need, things that are vague to me confuse me. That's why I see some, I don't really think I understand exactly what it consists of. So I guess what we'd have to say is when we're doing the comparison to this, apples to apples and oranges to oranges, you would need to know what are the typical functions of each of these things so then you could do a comparison to comparison. Because example, we may, there may be things that these people do that we don't do. That therefore, we would take those numbers out of the number because that's being done by somebody else in something. So we don't know, since we don't know exactly what their job descriptions are for these six, I mean, 13, 11.3 people that's on this list here in the median, we don't know for sure what they're all doing. We know some of the things they're doing for sure because Parks and Recreation things. But to your point, are they doing any yard maintenance or cutting grass? Is that somebody else that does that, you know? Is there anything as far as building, what about building stuff? Are they doing the building stuff? Or do they have the maintenance department within the Parks and Rec, I mean, within the town manages that? Because I know some places, the, their town administrations, their, their maintenance people maintain all of their facilities. You know, if the board goes bad, they fix it. They do all those things. They don't contract that out. They do it themselves. Larger towns, of course, who can afford that stuff. So they just work across the board. So they wouldn't necessarily show up under Parks and Recreation either.
Correct.
Right? So I mean, as I said, it's kind of hard to identify that.
Councilman Barbara, I believe on page 90 is the answer.
Page nine of?
90.
90 of this chart?
Yeah. In other words, if you're spending it on FTEs, you're counting people. If you look at the number, the dollars you spend, that would kind of answer your question. Would it not? I noticed on your, can you go back to slide 19? I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. That's very good data.
Thank you. Slide 19?
19, it was the one that had your benchmark analysis, I believe. For some reason, that row, talking about the per capita total was not completed. But in the book, it is. On page 90, it reflects that our budget is 168, and I think per 10,000, based on your numbers, we fall pretty high in that. Is that not right? It says the, so I mean, I'm assuming that would include the service contracts. It's in the budget.
How much of that does it, does, I understand this also probably includes the payments on the, on the Shrack, which has now been paid off?
That was just included, the operational vote.
This is only the operational?
That's right.
I see, I see, okay.
It's just a snapshot, too.
Yeah, and there's a reason why we separated everything out. We could have very easily just lumped everything together and said, hey, the town of Smithfield's per capita expenditures is just about at the high quartile compared to typical departments this size across the country. But because there are two separate budgets, operating budgets that Gary has to work with, which is the Sari Yard Community Center and... Right. So it took a little bit more of a deep dive. I wanted to make sure that we presented it to you as it exists, like as it truly is, versus just lumping everything in so that you can kind of have a better understanding of how each of the, each of the budgets function. And what different roles those pots of money play in delivering Parks and Recreation Services in Smithfield. If that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am, it does. It's very clear that we take good care of the parks and have a lot. Obviously, the feedback is good.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I said, it's very clear to me that Smithfield's doing a great job with their Parks and Recreation. We're very proud of it, but it gives us ideas for the future.
Correct, yes. Yes, I've worked with Smithfield Parks and Recreation back to the, you know, some of the Tim Johnson days in a prior job. So it makes me very proud to come back, to come back here and do this plan and see how great you guys are doing. Do I have any other questions or feedback?
I don't think so. Doesn't appear at this time.
I think we got some goals. We need to get some fishing places.
That's right. Exactly. Well, I mean, you know, we have, I mean, I mean, to your point, I mean, for a town our size, I mean, Gary, you and your staff, you're doing an amazing job, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, over the last few years since I've been mayor, I mean, you know, we've put in a boat ramp, right? We've put in a splash pad. We redid the Sari Yard Center, made a community center out of that. We're expanding the splash pad. We put in a walking trail. walking trail. And we've just made a lot of improvement. We purchased some land for future expansion.
Amphitheater.
And amphitheater, which is, is huge, right? It's, it's just, you, you do a lot with, you, you don't have a very huge, you know, huge staff, and I just, I do want to commend you. I think, and I think this sets our, you know, our, our goals and so forth for, for the years to come with the growth that we're, we're expecting and so forth. And I just, I want to say thank you and to your staff for, for putting this together. And we can certainly take a look at this and make sure that we are, at least have a guide for where we want to be in the future. Any other comments or questions on that?
Our request is to adopt the, adopt this. Now, if you want to have time to look over it and come back at a different time, that's okay, too.
Yep.
At some point in time, we will need to adopt it, too.
Sure. So I, I, I mean, my recommendation would be, unless, unless the council's ready, I think we just got the, the binders, what, about, about a week ago. There's a lot of information in here, a lot of information that was presented. Unless you need something for a grant application or something, my recommendation is that we, we give the council time to look at this and make any suggestions, because there's a lot in here, a lot of good stuff, but there may be some suggestions that they have before we adopt it, that, you know, some, some ideas of, you know, that some things that you may want to change and so forth.
Maybe some public comment. Is that an option now? Put any public comment?
So this is not part of public comment. We, I mean, we certainly, we can, we can have a work session on it or whatever, but I will, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll allow you to come up. Real quick. But I can't, I can't, I can't open it up to continue public comment, right? We, we do have other items on, on the agenda, right? And it's not set for public comment. So, yes, sir.
So, I'm Judd Patterson, co-owner of the Oak City Collection. And at the beginning of this meeting, we talked about a farmer's market. And if I'm understanding correctly, that was okayed, right?
It has not, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the plan. It's part of a recommendation in the plan. That's correct.
But my, my one question is, do you have access to the three hundred and eighty-something people that responded to, like, push it out that some of these things are happening, when they do begin to happen?
I guess, ma'am, can you clarify the question?
Well, you, you said three hundred and eighty-something people responded to your questionnaire. Do you have access to them to?
Those are mostly office.
Go back to them and say, hey, certain things are happening, you know, they're beginning to happen, and notifying them.
That's a really good question. No one's ever asked me that question. I mean, because we obviously know who they, who they are because we have their addresses and their names to mail them things. I know that it, I need to find out from the survey company because we contract with a survey, like a scientific survey firm to do these. So I can find out from them, like, what's their intellectual property and what's not, and kind of look at our, what, what the contract says and whether or not we can use that information as like a marketing list or like a, you know, just an engagement group. I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions?
No, ma'am, I agree with your comments of letting it stand for thirty days for, for more feedback. And thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And we'll bring this back up for future.
Mayor, moving to business item, I, I think perhaps we should move item number three to this, item number two?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, yes. We may not get to the budget discussions. That, that was on here in case.
Oh, okay.
We, we did, and then business item three was, was added, right? So, yeah, we should have probably put that in a, in a separate order or a different, different order. But, but yeah, so we'll move, if that's okay with, with, with the council, we'll move to business item number three, speaking of the farmer's market. Business item number three is a special event, Third Street Farmer's Market. And I'm not sure, Mr. Manager, are you presenting that? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. In front of you is a temporary use application to close the One Hundred Block South Third Street on the second and fourth Tuesdays, beginning April twenty-ninth and ending on October fourteenth of this year. In order to have a farmer market in that area, amplified sound will also be used during that time. This request came up relatively quickly, which is why it was added to the agenda, since the first day that they're requesting to close the street is the twenty-ninth of April. The applicant, Mr. Patterson and Susan Taylor, as well as the owners of the Twisted Willow are here. I'm sure they're willing to answer any questions you might have. They're kind of organizing this. I did have some short conversation with DSDC about it. There was some, now, I won't say concern, because they, they support a farmer market in the downtown, but approving this event two weeks out of the month without ever having it and knowing how it's going to play out, maybe a, a lot to ask. Maybe having it for a couple of times to see how it goes and then approve it after that point, if it's going well, or look for maybe alternative locations. If it doesn't pan out, would be advisable. But I'll leave that in the hands of the council.
Were there thought, anything, thoughts on council on this?
I just have, I think it's a great idea. I just think on Third Street between eight and two, that's a busy street. A lot of sheriff's cars go up and down that road. Is it not? I mean...
On a Saturday?
Yeah, it's Saturday, but, but I, I will say, to your point, though, I mean, I, yeah, it's, it's Saturday, but I will say the last, yeah. So I will, I will say that...
Thank you for clarifying that.
I frequent down there on Saturdays.
Oh, I have Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
That's Tuesday.
I apologize. I'm not sure why it says that. Should've been Saturday.
But, but to your point, I, I do frequent down there quite often on Saturdays. And especially recently, from Market Street to Third Street, just about every parking space is full on Saturdays. And people are everywhere. So that would somewhat be a concern of mine to close it for, for two weekends out of the month. I, I think it's a great idea. I think it'll be a draw for people downtown. My concern is, is that the businesses that are there, I mean, yes, we have other parking, but that is a good off-market street parking. And you're talking about closing that for two Saturdays out of a month. And like I said, I've personally been down there, and every single spot from Market Street to Johnston Street has been full on both sides of the road. I do think that is something that we need to, need to consider as we, as we think about this.
Where is this is open on Market Street?
On Third Street. We're the only two places that have, on that law.
So, so, so that Chris Johnston's Dress Place is open, and, and, and it draws a tremendous crowd.
The law is something it should be, like, most people have their dresses. I mean, I'm just...
Yep.
Like last weekend, it was almost dead because, like, everybody has their dresses by now.
Again, I'm not saying it's not doable. I'm just saying it's, it's something to consider.
The issue is that if we didn't close the road off and let through traffic, is there any way to, there's the Park, it's, or right across from Cecil's, but there's a big parking lot there. Could we use that? Some of Third Street as well, you know, put pins on. We just wanted scattered, we don't have two businesses on Third Street now.
On Front Street.
So we were just trying to break up more, where people walk around downtown on Saturday. Yes, there is people coming down here on Saturdays. We're just trying to get more traffic down there and give, I don't know, people something to do. And we thought with ours not being very long, Market Street being off of it, it may...
So, just one second, one, one second, Judd, okay? One second. So I, I, since the request is pretty soon, I mean, it is a business item, I will, I will open it up for some discussion, but I'm going to ask you to come to the podium and speak. We, we are broadcasting this and taping this. So if you don't mind, if you'll come to the podium and speak, please.
Judd Patterson from the Oak City Collection again. I think that the request should stand as it is. I, I do appreciate your observation that there's parking spaces taken up on Third Street, but a lot of that is, is maybe diner. They can park, there's other places to park. And I think from eight to two, having a, a really nice farmer's market and, and at least attempting it, it kind of goes in with what we just saw, was that was the top item, a farmer's market pavilion. And the, the lady mentioned that she would be willing to work with the DSDC and, and the downtown Smithfield businesses. So I think we've got some synergy going here. And I, I do appreciate that. Maybe we give it a try, maybe not approve it for the entire length that was requested, but, you know, maybe for three times. And then if it, see how it goes. You know, we're, we're treading new water here, too. We, but we want to make this happen. And we think it would be a draw to downtown Smithfield. And the more we can get a draw into downtown Smithfield, the more we can fill those empty spaces. That's our hope.
No, absolutely. I, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm just voicing, we got, we got to look at everything, right?
I understand.
And, and we're presented with something that we don't know anything about. We say a farmer's market, but what are we talking, right? Do we have a plan? Do we have anything? And we're talking about starting this pretty soon. So, I mean, what, what does it mean? And that's, that's the reason why I'm opening it up, right, is because the request is for something pretty quickly, and we don't have anything on it. Right? So that's, I think we need to understand that.
So we, we do have a, a plan to invite, you know, vendors. They don't all have to have vegetables and fruits and stuff. There could be some, some crafts and things like that as well. But we did have some vendors at an event with, with the Troy's Robotics team. And some did well, some didn't. But at least they had the opportunity. And I think some of those would, would welcome the chance to come back to a more organized and predictable farmer's market.
So, Mr. Mayor, could, I mean, you know, I see, you know, I also, I can understand the benefit to try to attract people to downtown. That's always important. And also see the benefit of having a, you know, a type of farmer's market where you give the opportunity for farmers to share, to have their wares, and also, you know, for some craftsmen to be able to have their stuff. So, you know, I can see the benefits to it. My concern is that, you know, it's a long, to your point, it's a long, there's a long period of April to October, and I don't think it's, it would be due diligence of us to, to extend something that long without knowing more about it. I had a recommendation, I don't know if, my recommendation would be, since it's on April the twenty-ninth, we have a town council meet on May the second. So my recommendation would be that we could approve this for April the twenty-ninth, and then bring it up as a business item to review it on May the second. It'd be right after the event. We'd be able to see what happened and see if we want to extend it or just say no. But we could extend if we feel like it's done okay, want a little more information, we could send it for a little more time. You know, does that seem, I mean, that, that way we get a chance to evaluate it. They get to try it to see if it works for them. And we've not really done much, and we get feedback from all the people, not just them. We get feedback from the businesses in the area, the ones that, you know, maybe like parking became a factor for them. Does that make sense? I mean, that way, that way, we, because I think it's a positive thing, but just don't feel good to be going very far down the road without knowing for sure. You, also, you've not done it before, so even though, you know, we want to see. I think that would be reasonable. Does that seem something that would be, I mean...
Yes, but I would, I would like to give it like three times.
Well, but I'm thinking, we could evaluate it. I think we should, we can evaluate it. Since it happens on the twenty-ninth, we could evaluate it on the second.
And we have another, another meeting.
We have another meeting on the second. So, I mean, we could easily extend it after the, on the second. That would be no trouble. You're only three days difference.
My only, my only pushback on that is, maybe the first one, you know, if it doesn't pan out so good, it's only because we're just getting started. So I would appreciate maybe approving it for three iterations. So six weeks, the twenty-ninth, the second Saturday in May, and the fourth Saturday in May, and then evaluate. I mean, that's just, just to give us a chance to ramp it up.
For their planning purposes, it'd be hard to, no, you might only have one shot, I think. I, I do, I think this is a great idea. I do have some reservations about extending the amount, whole amount, but where is that? After one, they might not have had a good chance to get it right. Second time, be better. I, I could go with anywhere between one and three.
Mayor, thank you for letting me speak. And sir, thank you for your idea. This is, you got to understand that, like the mayor's point, this is, affects more than just, you know, your business and others coming to this thing. We have gotten some feedback, and we're working with the downtown development, that one of their contradictory points was is closing the streets for, for traffic and such. Specifically speaking, the gentleman that runs the Howe Theater, and that was one of his concerns. My question to you is, you know, what does this look like? Have you looked at other areas of the town? Has the downtown development helped you look at that?
Well, we, I mean, we did consider the parking lot across from Cecil's. And, and that would be a possibility. In fact, Terry just brought that up. We're, we're just thinking about the layout, and, you know, frankly, we would like to see people walk in the streets in front of our businesses, you know? It helps us, too. Even if there's no parking, they're going to park to go to the farmer's market somewhere.
Yeah.
And then walk the street. And I just think the layout would be a little more open and amenable to shopping.
I know, I know Clayton does one.
Yeah.
And theirs is in a parking lot.
It is, and, and, and they have a great farmer's market.
Right.
I've been to it several times.
Is that the county's parking lot or our parking lot?
It's the county's parking lot. Well, how about the lot right beside us? Have you considered that?
The courtyard.
Right here.
Behind your business.
How many vendors are you expecting?
We, well, that's why I was coming up. I put...
Because we haven't even talked about that.
I put feelers out two or three days ago. I am an avid Facebook junkie of posting stuff. I already got about thirty vendors that want to come to this. I have three farms right now that want to get in this as well. Everybody's waiting for a date. As I told them, I was hoping to find out some kind of information tonight. We're just trying to get this started before the middle of summer, then people are going to the beach, whatever. We just wanted to try this out. This has been something we've been talking about. We've been down here for almost two years. We've been talking about, hasn't gone anywhere. So that's why we decided to, us in Oak City, just get together and try to do this. Every day, I'm getting more and more people that are vendors. I'm screening them to make sure it's not junk down here. We have like twenty-three vendors in our store to begin with, so I know how to, you know, screen them and everything. But we just want this to grow. Our Third Street is, I'm not trying to be ugly, it's dead right now. I already talked to the Howe Movie Theater guy, because he comes down my store to talk to me all the time. And I even brought it up to him because on Saturdays, I asked him, when do you open? His first matinee is at one o'clock. So it's just us in Oak City. Jules is open right now, but again, Jules prom dresses, that's the only time that she's super busy. Been watching the past two weeks, everybody's getting their prom dresses already because they're already starting to have proms. So in last Saturday, it was dead. So we do, again, like they said, a lot of the parking on our Third Street is the diner or going to Gilded Pair. I totally understand. We have other parking lots, though, for them... We have other parking lots, though, for them to go and park there. If we have, we're just trying to get it to where we have now One Stop Smoke Shop, Urban Misfits. There was supposed to be another place, what, the Maze Place or whatever? We have nothing on that street. We're trying to promote business, not only for us, but we started at the parking lot. Even went on the side of the courthouse and put people over there, vendors over there. It makes them go to Market Street. We have Dragonfly, we have the Gilded Pair, the diner, you know, all that stuff going on there. Give them a walkway to go that way, but we're trying to build up our street that all of a sudden, past six months, has died. We're all just making it. We want to bring more people down here.
Now, again, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. Please don't think just because, you know, I'm, I'm bringing up points for the board to consider, because that's my job.
Right.
And my job is to think about those things, right? And so, please don't think I'm against it, right? We have done farmer's markets in the past, we have done them right out here. We've done farmer's markets at least two or three times since I've been on the council, okay? I think they're a great idea, right? So, don't, don't think that my comments are negative. I won't, I, it warms, I know, when I come down here and I saw all those parking spaces filled, and when I'm, I sit in my favorite spot in the window with my wife in, in the Gilded Pair, and I watch the people walking around on Saturdays, that makes me feel great as the mayor of this town. That's what I want to see, okay? So, trust me, I, I, that's exactly what I want to see. I just want to make sure that before we commit to something, that we have truly thought about the consequences. And that's why I think the reduced time may be a good option. But also, I mean, and, you know, I, I would, I would say we do need to consider, you know, if that doesn't work, where a, a alternative place may, may be, right?
That's what we were thinking, is if we're the only two really open, Jules is going to be slowing down extremely. The Howe Movie Theater already asked them, on Sundays, when do you have your matinees? When do you open? He said he starts at one o'clock on Suns, or Saturdays. So, all during the morning, people are always walking around, they come in our store. We're just trying to get more people to come down to do more things. We have a huge draw just with our store, we get people from the beach and stuff, give them something else to do. But let's, I already asked the Howe Movie Theater, because I know he's touchy. So I was just trying to, okay, what can we do to appease you? I mean, he could sit out there and sell popcorn and water, whatever, to everybody. Hey, you know what, I have a matinee at one thirty-two o'clock. So, we're trying to not step on anybody's toes, but that's about the only thing really open, besides us in Oak City, on Third Street on Saturday mornings. I'd love to have it on Sundays, to be honest with you, but, because we're the only ones open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, no problem.
I'm sure Suzanne with Oak City. I think it's important to keep it on Third Street for a couple of reasons. And one reason being is, we're running this thing, we need to keep an eye on it. And it'll be easier for us. And another thing, I want to keep traffic on Third Street out and about, to keep it looking busy, to keep people coming to Third Street. As Terry mentioned, we've got one, two, three, four vacancies right now. Two of which, in particular, have been vacant for what seems like forever. Might be three. The bills, the businesses that are there, that are staying there, other than Jules, and we, we consider that kind of a specialty enough that people come from all over the state to come to Jules. They don't come to Smithfield, they come to Jules, and Jules brings this business and the theater. But as far as retail shops and that kind of thing, making Smithfield more interesting, the two businesses that you have, have something in common, that being that we own our buildings. So, we aren't going to flee to Salma next week, like our predators, like our neighbors have done. But for the rental units that are out there, we like to have businesses, retail businesses, that have a chance of staying, that have enough business and so forth. So, that's another reason for bringing more traffic on Third Street itself.
Mayor, I, I just got to say, I very appreciate the energy that's here tonight. I mean, this application's from today, that's the date on it. I mean, we, we have to give due diligence. I certainly don't want you guys to feel like this is a debate, and we don't want you to do it, and want to find a way not to let you have it. But we have got to do due diligence in this. And I understand the season's on us for the fresh products. A couple of questions I have, and we have the Ham and Yam plan, I know that's not going to be a conflicting date, you know, the Third Street eateries, all these things. Let's organize ourselves, form a farmer market committee, and let's make this thing real, you know, make it happen. But with the consideration of the dates that are requested, that's the tough part, you know, because of the, the impact it can have on the community. I think it's a great idea, I, I, my personal opinion. But a couple of questions, you said you have an amplified sound on the stage, you're having vendors. Is there a vendor fee? Who collects the fees? I mean, all these little things, how can we help with all that?
I'm all for the committee in figuring this out. Our, our initial plan was to allow them to come in free for the first maybe couple of times, just to, to test the waters. If they do well, I don't think the vendors would object to paying a small fee. I also want to contact other farmer's markets like in Cary, because I lived in Cary for a while, and they have a great farmer's market, and it's well organized. And people basically join it, and they're a member of the farmer's market, and then they, you know, they run it for so long. I totally understand your due diligence, and that's why I came back with a proposal that, give us three shots at it. You know, the end of April, and, and then the two weeks, the two weekends in May. Then we can reevaluate. I think it gives us, you know, I think one shot is just not enough. You know, three is, is a fair test, and then we can go from there. And I'm all, I'm all ears when it comes to helping, you know, form a committee, and we'll work, we'll work hard with you on it.
While you're here, tell us the three dates, do you want to start at the 29th, or do you want to push it?
Well, yeah, the 29th, that's, and it's still almost a month away. It's the end of the, because we have five Saturdays in April, and then start it, and then the 2nd and 4th in May.
The 13th and the 27th of May.
Yeah, whatever the, the 2nd and 4th are. And the reason we, we chose the 2nd and 4th is because Wilson's Mills has organized a small farmer's market, and theirs is the 1st and 3rd. We didn't want to compete with them, we wanted to, in fact, Terry and I went out there Saturday and talked with them about, if they have vendors that want a 2nd and 4th, you know, they want to have a farmer's market every time, we would invite them to come and participate in ours. So that's one way we're recruiting, and then Terry's already mentioned how she's recruiting, so we just want to get the approval and, and give it, give it a go.
Can you explain amplified sound? I know you asked, but you didn't.
So I, I didn't fill out that, and I don't know what the amplified sound is for, so.
I mean, we got a farmer's market, and then we got amplified sound, we're just trying to figure out how they go together.
So, my husband was thinking about just getting a speaker playing like bluegrass or something, outside with our electric from our store, just putting something right outside our door or something. We don't have a band or anything, but if down the road, we started collecting rent or whatever you call it, vendor fees, we were talking about putting it into a pot, and then maybe, you know, if this does take off towards the end, it would be nice to have some kind of bluegrass or some country band that, you know, joined in, because we normally have the bands over by the courthouse for the Third Streeters, have something like that over there. We just put that down because if we put a speaker or something, we're not planning on anything like, hey, a rock band or anything like that. Just something like people are walking around, or checking out the vendors and stuff. By the way, I got all these vendors, but mind you, vendors always make dates way in advance. So these twenty-five, thirty vendors that I have, this is another reason why we're pushing for it the end of April, is because if you don't strike on a lot of vendors, they make up their dates for the whole summer, because those are the times they do outdoor things. If we don't, and we, you know, push this off till May or June, we're probably going to lose a lot of the vendors that I do have interested in this. Like, they were, how much is it? You know, we're like, it's free, this would be great. And they have some pretty cool stuff, too. So, trying to get a variety of everything, but that's sort of why, we weren't trying to push, push, but with vendors and stuff, they do go all over North Carolina and set up booths everywhere. You have to get them early, or you don't get them. I didn't want to get junked down here, I want to get good vendors down here, so.
Questions, maybe for Mr. Scott. If this thing takes off, like we hope it does, and it gets to the point where they need to collect fees, then aren't we opening up another can of worms where we have businesses running, you know, I don't think it's wrong, like, street fair, and then collecting, collecting fees? Is that going to cause an issue with?
You don't have to, if you don't.
I'm not, I'm not for or against that.
We were just trying to say, hey, thank you for coming and visiting, but.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm not for or against the fee collecting, but if that does, is there going to be an issue? Trying to look at this from thirty thousand feet, a business gets a street closed down, has some type of festival, is that, and they're collecting fees, is that a, do we do, have we done that?
Well, I mean, we close the streets for Ham and Yam, and they collect fees for.
And it goes, and it stays with the Ham and Yam, so it's nonprofits.
They pay to have all those booths.
Okay.
I mean, they're not, not, they're free.
That's why we were trying to get it together with.
I mean, there may be a, an issue for them collecting it,
based on their accounting and their, you know, if they're not a nonprofit, or if they're going to run it through their business, or what they're going to do with this.
I just didn't know if that would.
Doesn't impact the town, that's.
Okay, make the town liable and, or anything on that.
Not for the fee issue.
When you start collecting, you know, hell, it is when money starts getting.
No, that would be like completely on us. We have like our own little committee going on, that we just wanted a certain amount of people, they're great at doing what they're doing, they're trying to get the farmers and stuff, I'm trying to get the vendors. I am down, downtown very early on Saturdays, so I have no issue reaching out if people have issues. We don't want to have to stress any of you guys out with anything. We're just sort of taking this on our own. And just seeing where it goes.
Right, and I, I appreciate, I'm glad, thank y'all for doing this, thank you.
It'll.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Can I, I have a question.
Sure.
Question for Sarah. I want to know how the, how it impacts Downtown Development, how she, you know, what's your opinion too, because it's Downtown Development?
Absolutely. So my board has not had an opportunity to consider this request at all, it just came to you all today. So I, I want to be hesitant in terms of speaking for them, but I think this is, this idea is something that we would like to do ourselves, but I'm a one-person show, and I, I just lack the capacity to do it myself. So, I think we're willing to support the efforts of John and Terry and Suzanne and Judd, as, as well as others. And can certainly assist in doing that. I think I share some of the same concerns that the council has brought up, just with regards to making sure that it is set up for success from day one. And, you know, a lot of that is, is through consistency and planning and that sort of thing. And Downtown Development was involved on the very tail end of the planning for the farmer's market that previously existed here in Town Hall Park. Literally, I think it opened, and we got an invitation to join that, that committee, then sort of next week, or, or the week of, or something to that effect. So, you know, having seen that, and some of this issues and some of the successes, definitely understand that it is, you know, potentially really a part-time job for somebody. And that's where I've kind of been starting to look at how we could develop capacity through some grant funding opportunities to potentially hire somebody, whether it's the DSDC or the town, to potentially hire somebody on a part-time basis to manage this, because it, or to manage a farmer's market, because it really could be a big production. So, you know, I, I do think it would be a benefit to Downtown, to Downtown businesses, provided that it is well managed and well-run. And, you know, I, there are certainly some business owners that have expressed very recently to me concerns about street closures. But, at some level, you, you have to do what's best for the majority of businesses. And, and to my knowledge, there's been no surveys in and out, there's been no input gathered from, you know, other businesses. And, you know, provided that there is accessible parking elsewhere, and provided that, you know, this, this is going to be an, an event that benefits many. I think it's something that my board would be supportive of. And my, the board chair is actually here, if you'd like to, he'd like to make some comments, if you'd like to hear from him as well.
Sarah, what does it look like to get permission for the parking lot that's there at Johnston?
That's something that we have requested permission from the county, just with an email to Rick Hester previously about, for Ham and Yam Festival, the Junior Women's League makes that request for Touch a Truck. Those are the only two events that I am aware of that utilize that parking lot. And the county's been good about working with us. Obviously, we're both nonprofit organizations, so I don't know if maybe there are some additional things there for them to consider. I don't know if, if the town's parking lot, if y'all would consider things differently for private businesses versus a nonprofit. So I, I don't know specifics there. But they've been good to work with, and, and when we have events in that parking lot, they always do a good job of moving vehicles, so they're not sort of in drag conflict. And with the previous Independent Celebration, we were obviously using that parking lot as well as kind of barrier space, but that's a little bit different.
Sarah, just trying to get an idea here, during the summer months, you close the street two Friday nights?
We close a hundred block of Third Street for the Ham and Yam Festival, which will be May 6th. And that was one thing that, that I did want to bring the council's attention, is if you're approving an April 29th date, then you have Ham and Yam on May 6th, then the 13th for another date, and then the 27th. That's five times within a month period, so that, just want to make you aware of that. But we close the hundred block of South Third Street for the Ham and Yam Festival. There are four Third Streeter dates this year, so that'll be the third Friday of May, Septem, I'm sorry, May, June, September, and October. That block is also closed for Touch a Truck, which the Junior Women's League is planning for November 4th. And then it is closed for the Christmas tree lighting, which has been typically the first Thursday in December. There are some discussions that are going to be happening about maybe combining that event with the Christmas parade. So that block is effectively closed also for the Christmas parade, which is the second Thursday. Because cars are not passing through Market Street, you essentially have that block closed from Johnston to Market. And I believe, that's it. The Independent Celebration, the Fire Department has let us know that we are not going to be able to use that same location we've used for a number of years moving forward. So we're actually going to be looking at moving that back across the river this year, and have got some work to do on that. So that would be a street closure that will not happen this year, that's happened previously.
I would like to have your board chair come in, since he's here, have him come and give us what he thinks.
If you want to, sir.
If you want to.
It's fine.
Of course.
Troy Brindle, current president of DSDC. My thoughts are, I love the idea, like you all, everyone loves the idea. I'm not too concerned about shutting Third Street down, but I agree, long-term, maybe we just try, I think Judd's idea is three times, because enough standing parrots, if it's going to work, and kind of evaluate from there, possibly. So I think it's good that we have business owners willing to take this on and help us out. We're also in a business downtown too, the Gilded Pair, so we would love it, because it's just going to bring more people.
Would this be something you'd be interested in chairing the committee?
Myself? Or the DSDC? I, I know there's talks already, they're going to start a 501(c)(3) and, and starting committee, so there are talks about that already. I mean, I don't know if we're going to put on the DSDC wing, but if we've got. but if we've got business owners downtown willing to step up and take something on, I think it's, let them kind of run with it. We can always kind of keep eyes on it and so on, but I think what this downtown needs right now is the local businesses to kind of step up also.
I was joking about the cheer for her.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, any other questions, thoughts, suggestions?
I think we need to go off your recommendation. What's your recommendation, Mayor?
I don't, I don't vote.
You have a tie, man. Like a tiebreaker.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I make a recommendation that we, that we approve it for three times, give them through May, let them give it a try and see what happens. Then we can bring it back to, we bring it back to evaluate it in June, prior to doing any more. So, it doesn't have authority to go beyond May without our approval. That would give us plenty of time to get feedback from the town, from everybody around, and see how it works. And that's really what I've kind of got, I kind of got that impression from those others that spoke, that that would be something, that would be admirable to them. So, I didn't really see any opposition to that directly.
It says no security is requested, but, I mean, if this, would police need to be...
The police will be working, they'll walk through, and they have time, make sure things are okay. But they're, they're not requesting officers there, there's no alcohol being served. There's, we have events like this without a police full-time presence. They would have to be involved in blocking off the street, make sure it's properly blocked off, but that would be their extent of...
So, I'd probably put an officer or two there anyway, with the street being blocked?
I mean, you have to pay for them. So, usually, that's borne by the event, and they're not, it's, they're not taking in any revenue for it, so it becomes difficult unless the council wants to approve overtime for it. Which, I mean, is that the interim chief to decide? But if the council feels strongly about that's what, I'm sure where he's going to go.
All right, so, was that a motion, sir?
That was a motion. I move to approve this for the 29th of April, 13th of May, and the 27th of May, and no further without approval by the town council.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second? Motion, a second. Any further discussion on it?
Mayor, I'm totally supportive of it. I just think that if we can get them to bring a plan, you know, and we can go ahead and look at this early for the future of it, figure out, you know, things that are important, you know, the fee structure, are you going to serve hot food, you know, there's a lot of things, this thing can grow into a big thing. So, I'm all for it, but I just think we've got to help you do it the right way, so, thank you.
So, all comments, I have.
Okay, any others? All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve for three times. Is that correct, the three dates? And then, anything further, then that would have to come back before the council, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It was about a farmer's market.
All right, good luck. Let's get it done. All right. All right, so I think I already know the answer to this question. As far as the budget, we can, I don't think you guys want to tackle a budget session tonight. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Very fair.
You guys want to look at a date that we can do? Next, does next Tuesday work?
Tuesday?
Monday, Monday or Tuesday, I guess?
I'll do Monday.
I can do Monday, Tuesday.
That's the 11th.
Do Monday?
I can do Monday or Tuesday, either one works for me.
Let me see what I got here.
No days work really well right now.
Tuesday would be better for me.
I'm good, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday next week.
How about you, Travis?
I have to work Monday, but, I mean, I could try to arrange my schedule, Monday or Tuesday.
I mean, Tuesday work?
Tuesday's better.
Tuesday work for you, Marley? Tuesday, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, six, do you still have?
Yeah, anytime Tuesday night.
Okay.
The earlier the better.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock on the 11th?
Yep.
On Tuesday, the 11th, six o'clock. You're getting close, right? You might be working late that night, in other words.
Got me a late.
We'll try not to do anything without you. How's that?
What time?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock. All right, but, I know, that is if you could have my taxes ready. If not, we're going, we'll just choose another date. Hey, that's better than... All right, all right, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll just plan to adjourn this meeting then until the 11th at 6 o'clock, how about?
Recession.
I meant recess, sorry, not adjourned, excuse me, recess, recess. Okay? All right, now we'll move on to council members' comments. Anything the council would like to share?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I got a few, if you don't mind. Actually, about four or five pages. We're on spring break, so we can be here all night. But anyway, I'll start out by giving Dr. Carolyn Innes, today is her 93rd birthday, so she's definitely one of the pillars over in East Smithfield, and that's probably the reason why I got my start in education and all the mentoring I do. It was because of her, so I had a chance to go by and see her today. Luckily enough, she wasn't working at the Board of Education today, but just wanted to wish her a happy 93rd birthday. Also, this Saturday, Smith Collins Park, we still in the process of having our Easter egg hunt. I know it's calling for rain, but still, for right now, we're going to try to have it, probably starting about 11 o'clock, and we're going to serve some hot dogs and chips, and definitely like to thank everybody, the Parks and Rec for donating eggs, Sloan for eggs and hot dogs, and Shannon for all what she's done, and everybody else across Johnston County and Smithfield. A week Saturday on the 15th, my uncle, who moved to Michigan, actually before I was born, but all my aunts and uncles, except for my dad, they moved to Michigan, and my uncle played for the University of Michigan, played in the 1976 NCAA Championship Game, played against Indiana. That's been the only team that was undefeated. But he's going to be down at the museum, right beside the Ava Garden Museum, and he's going to be doing the book signing, just pretty much telling, you know, basically his life. He grew out, grew up in the Short Journey area, in the Cleveland area. But basically, about how he grew up, you know, had a chance to play basketball, and how he got in his leadership role. And somehow or another, I've been voluntold to be the moderator, and that's going to be a little new to me, but, so, that's going to start, like, 10 o'clock at the museum. So, I just definitely look forward to definitely seeing him, and, you know, just also promoting his book that he's written. Other than that, I would just, I know we just went through the Parks and Rec master plan and whatever, and I didn't know until yesterday, when we did the nine departments, but it was kind of shocking, and it was kind of, you know, disconcerting that Annie B. Jones, you know, she's no longer going to be doing, you know, what she's been doing for the last couple of years, because I know how instrumental that has been with getting some of the young kids involved in some of the Parks and Rec activities. So, I just hope that, you know, it don't dampen them kids, and, you know, having a chance to play football, cheerleading, whatever it was. So, I hope, you know, we can be able to pick up the slack and keep, you know, giving them kids a chance to participate in Parks and Rec activities. Lastly, I'm going to say, and it's just basically, you know, I do represent District One. District One entails of, you know, probably the richest part of Smithfield, and probably the poorest part also, and, you know, and everything in between. And, you know, I did send you guys, the mayor, town manager, and also our interim police chief, an email about some concerns that some of the residents are having down in East Smithfield, and, you know, and they're scared, you know, and, you know, I live in, I live in East Smithfield also, and, you know, with some of the shootings, and, you know, things that have been going on, and the council, you know, had the chance to, you know, to kind of understand what's going on. But, you know, we definitely, we need a plan, we need to be proactive, and, you know, because some of those bullets actually hit, you know, some houses that, you know, I don't even think the bullets was intended for. And, you know, as I look around the room, I don't think, you know, you all in your neighborhoods, you don't have to go through this. So, this is definitely something, you know, serious, that I want everybody to take serious, even though, you know, it's not happening in your neighborhood. You know, but some of the residents there, they're scared, you know. They wanted to come to the meeting tonight, but then again, they didn't want to come. You know, sometimes they feel scared to even, you know, talk to a police officer because of possibly retaliation or whatever. And, you know, you know, I got to be the voice for them. And I know what happened a few years ago when I started running, campaigning again for town council, you know. I know there were some police officers over in East Smithfield, I guess because they was told to go there and protect and serve, that, you know, the statements were, you know, "This is what your councilman won." You know, and I definitely, I have a problem with that, you know. So, I don't know what the plan is going to be, but, you know, I just, you know, the residents need to feel safe, and, yeah, it's about to get warm, and, you know, folks are going to be out. And I just hope that, you know, we can devise a plan where, you know, that everybody feels safe. And that's all I have for tonight.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. If it's okay, can I have the interim chief come up and maybe just address a little bit that? I think communication is paramount with this stuff. And I agree with the councilman that the feeling scared and, you know, are real. And, you know, so, anything that we can provide would be helpful.
Yes, sir. One of the things over in the neighborhood with the shootings here recently, we have been putting more patrols over there, concentrating in that area. And you're right, when it gets warmer, people are getting outside more. A lot of the problems are coming from people that don't live in the community, honestly. They're coming from outside of here, coming here, and there's very, there's a lot of good people in the neighborhood. I've talked to several of them over the past couple of weeks. And like I said, we are doing more patrols. We're doing some other things also in our plan. One of the concerns we did have, which is one thing I think that you spoke about, was people were concerned that they didn't want to talk to us. And that's one thing we've been finding out, when we have these incidents, a few people know who it is, they just don't want to talk to us or tell us. So, what we've, we've come up with to address part of that is we're going to basically have business cards, we're going to have what we call door hangers. So, if we have incidents like that, a lot of people don't realize that we have an anonymous tip line. And so, what we're going to do, we're going to start promoting that, and we're going to go around, we'll be going around door-to-door, and just passing out these anonymous tip business cards, things of that nature. So, if somebody knows something, or they see something, you know, they can always call us, and they don't have to give their name, number, any of that. They can just give us, provide us with the information, because that's what we need. We did have some good leads early on, but they've kind of fizzled out. But there again, like I said, we are in the process of working on some different things, especially with the community. If it's a case where we need to talk to the community, get some of the community leaders together, by all means, I don't mind doing that as well, because that's what I'm here for. You know what I'm saying? I want to talk to the community. I know some of the, I know a couple of reps over there, if they know something, they will call me and tell me. But like I said, we are doing more aggressive patrols over there, and so I do feel the concern, because you're right, it is dangerous. A lot of people come over there. They don't understand that when you fire a round up into the air, it's got to come down somewhere. So, that's one thing we are working on, is to provide, and like I said, there's a very few people over there that are creating a problem. And nine times out of 10, it's people from a different area coming into Smithfield, because we have some very good residents over there.
I got a couple of questions, Chief. You know, I've seen the pictures, and I appreciate the email that you send, and these bullets didn't just go up in the air and come down. Some of them went through their houses, and the mirrors, and the bedroom, and such. And I understand the fear, it's very alarming. My question is, what ways can we assure that these people feel if they have information they would like to disclose anonymously, that they remain anonymous? Can they text a number?
Yes, sir, that is, we have, we're going to put it on our Facebook page as well. Like I said, we have an anonymous tip line now, but a lot of people don't, don't use it, or they don't know that we have it. So, that's one reason why we're going to have the business card, they can come anonymous. And we also have a, an email where they can send information to us as well, that is anonymous. Sometimes we get these, and people have concerns, but they forget it is anonymous. We can't find out who it is, so we have no way to call them back to say, "Hey, this, your concern has been addressed." So, it is anonymous, and like I said, so we're going to start promoting that more, so that people will give us the information. I think, hopefully, that's the intent, is so, once we start providing the information to the public, they can call us with their concerns, they can call us and give us that information that we need.
I think one of the things we're going to get back to doing is, we do have an East Smithfield improvement organization, and we did, used to meet at the different churches and stuff like that. And, you know, a lot of times, the residents, they'll feel more comfortable, probably, I think, gee, you might have been, yeah, I know, but I think they'll feel more comfortable, you know, staying there right in the neighborhood, coming in, and, you know, they didn't want to come over here tonight. Some did, some didn't. I just tell them, you know, you didn't really have to, you know. But I think, you know, we're going to try to get back to doing that, and therefore, you know, we can invite people from all departments, you know, to be able to come and, you know, just share information, or answer questions, or whatever. So, we definitely going to get back to doing that.
Yes, sir, that's my, that's one of my goals, is, like I said, is to get more of the community leaders, because you're right, we did used to do that. We used to have them at a church. I won't say it was like every Tuesday night, maybe, or maybe it was on Wednesdays before they had service. And that helped out a lot, because we got to meet a lot of the residents over there. They felt more comfortable coming to us while we were there, and they could talk to us, and we could really address the issues. We could explain some things that's going on, and so they kind of got a little bit better understanding. So, that's what we want to get back to. We want to get more involved in the community and talk to the leaders in the community and the citizens that who live there.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any other council members' comments? This time, Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say I'm very disappointed that we're not going to do more budget work tonight. But we'll, we'll get through that.
I think Shannon wants to stay a little bit longer.
I definitely want to stay. I want to make sure that the community is aware that the Mother-Sun Dance was scheduled for the 29th has changed the date. That is changed now to April 15th, so 15th instead of the 29th. We have a ribbon cutting still scheduled for the trail over at Smith Collins Park for Saturday, the 29th, at 10:00 a.m. We also have a projected date of completion for the amphitheater, which is somewhere around the 18th to the 20th of April. So, we are planning a ribbon cutting there, and probably an event Friday before Ham and Yam, which is May 5th, be in the evening, and that's still in the planning station, so we'll get more information to you on that. And we have our annual litter sweep scheduled for April 22nd, so put that on your calendar. We would greatly appreciate it. I also wanted to mention that one of our captains, Bentley Powell, with the Fire Department, is retiring, and we have a reception at the main fire station for him on April 27th at 1:00 to 4:00. It's drop-in, drop-out. and we have a reception at the main fire station for him on April 27th at 1:00 to 4:00. It's drop-in, drop-out. So start at 1:00 p.m. on the 27th. And last, um, uh, D S T C, Sarah had mentioned about the fireworks going to be shot off over behind the fan, um, not fan, Dollar General store this year instead of, uh, downtown. And on this Thursday about 8:00, they are gonna shoot a few test fireworks off from that location just to see how high they go and what size tubes they need to make sure they're viewed. So if you see some fireworks in that area on Thursday night, that, that's what it is. It's just a few test fireworks that they're going to fire. Um, so I wanted to bring that to the community's attention as well. That, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, gentlemen, there's nothing else. And, um, I will entertain a motion to recess until Tuesday night, the 11th at 6:00.
I move that we recess until Tuesday night at, uh, on the 11th at 6:00 to continue our budget discussions.
Second.
Motion, a second. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll stay and protest.